Good afternoon, my colleagues and the people of Guam. The Committee on General Government Operations, Appropriation and Housing and the Department of Revenue and Taxation for your work and your committee's work on this effort. As noted, Mr. Chair, in the Department of Revenue and Taxation's bonded warehouses for tobacco products, the OPA report number 19-07, "Our island is losing out on millions in tax revenues that is rightfully owed to the people of Guam." One year prior to that, the OPA report number 18-04 states that pursuant to Title 11, Guam Code Annotated (GCA), Chapter 26, Article 6, "Tobacco tax collections are supposed to be immediate because tobacco imports are released after tax payments are made." However, 99% of tobacco taxes are not collected immediately because the law allows importers, which is the tobacco wholesalers, to delay tax payments on tobacco products it stores in private warehouse when authorized by the Department of Revenue and Taxation, which is DRT. Mr. Chair, we are all trying to find ways to bring more needed revenues, especially during this time when the government is operating bare bones and more lean than ever before while still having to provide for the basic services. I believe, Mr. Chair, that this bill will help close some of those gaps where taxes are leaking and aid to the department in collecting these taxes. Mr. Chair, I want to know that the 34th Guam Legislature has actually had oversight on this matter, and in November of 2018, DRT simply stated that this mandate was too costly and not a priority at the time. Here we are, Mr. Chair, two years later and still facing the same situation. We need to not pass the buck. We can no longer say we are working on it. That ship has sailed, and it is time for us to get it done. Through the advocacy of my good colleague, Senator Munia from Chigo, she has made sure that this body takes care of our island's cancer patients. We have made strides, but as we have discussed last week, we are not doing enough. I would like to read a section of the Audit 1804 so my colleagues understand the ramifications. "Potential effect of underreporting tobacco tax: If tobacco tax is underreported, the Healthy Future Funds would be understated, which would deprive Guam of tobacco tax revenues needed annually for appropriations for health and education programs relating to tobacco and alcohol prevention, treatment and control, and to improving overall health and well-being. Guam Cancer Trust Fund programs supporting cancer screening, treatment, support services, cancer education, and outreach programs assisting GMHA's overdue obligations and operating expenses and maintaining the Guam Cancer Registry. Furthermore, those businesses that diligently apply tax laws with integrity would be unfairly disadvantaged." We did hear from one local tobacco distributor at the public hearing that even though they make up 45% of the market, they are paying around 60 to 75% of the funds reflected in the consolidated revenue expenditure report, which you and I know is the CRER. He presented his statements at the hearing, and the bill has been amended to incorporate technical amendments, including some legal suggestions. And with that being said...
Thanks.
With that being said, Mr. Chair, I literally hope that my colleagues support the effort of this bill. I know that I do have an amendment, but I just want to share that when we look at the possibilities based on the OPA report and based on what we can look for in working closely with you, Mr. Chair, we literally realize that there could be additional revenues that could come into the coffers based on that if we have a structure in place. And I know with that possibility of even being additional revenues of up to $15 million, Mr. Chair, I know that that was one of the reasons why you even said, "Let's see what we can do to work this together." I know that there were some concerns from Rev and Tax, and I know that after further discussions with them, that they are amenable with respect. I just want to say that even going into further after consultation with the Governor's Policy Division, I have informed that DRT is in full support of this measure provided that we address one issue, and we are making the vendor only collect on whatever in excess of current collections and provide the Department of Revenue and Tax resources for the implementation of this program. And I have incorporated them in this following amendment. I know it's been proffered, I mean, it's been uploaded. Have you gotten it? If it's not there... It's not... Okay, so I just want to say, based on that, it should have been uploaded, but if not, if I can just speak on the amendment. Okay, it's on page 1, Mr. Chair, line 16 to 18, to amend the bill to read. You won't be able to talk about the amendment. You can talk in general, but not the amendment because we're not going to entertain amendments. We're going to have everybody ask questions about the bill, and then we'll come back. They may even ask a question about what you're going to amend anyway. I understand that. Thank you, Mr. Chair. But so just so that my colleagues have an understanding that there is an amendment on the floor from me as the author of the full legislation, Bill 368, and it's literally for the purpose of enforcing the cigarette stamp law, "The total cost of administration for the cigarette stamps program, which shall include payment to the offer of such costs incurred by DRT for contract management, and shall be a percentage not more than 12% of the tobacco tax collected in excess of the average actual monthly excise tax collected over the last three fiscal years." And the intent of that is to make sure that, we know that Rev and Tax is the collector of all revenues coming in, and we just want to make sure that the resources that come in, that they have that opportunity and the RFP that goes out, that DRT has the resources based on what is... If you know, Mr. Chair, the previous public law that was passed in the 34th Guam Legislature gave 44% to the private vendor, and again, this is to say that there shall be a percentage of not more than 12%. So in the efforts of working closely with Rev and Tax, working closely with the counsel from the Governor's Policy Division and the folks there, I just think that this is a fair compromise, and I'm hoping that my colleagues will be considerate of that. We need more revenues, Mr. Chair, and this is one way of helping recover that. So with that being said, I literally hope that I can proffer this amendment as soon as we finish our rounds of questioning. Thank you, Madam Speaker. My colleagues, we will be proceeding to my left, your right, and I did ask Senator Castro if he had any questions. He stated he does not have any questions. Unfortunately, I know Senator Munia had to step out, but we're going to go ahead and move along. Senator Teller, do you have any questions on the bill, Bill 368?
Sis Massey.
To the panel, prefer.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair. And good afternoon, Mrs. Santos. Thank you for being here. Have you had a chance to review the new bill that was introduced as amended?
I'm sorry, Senator, no, I haven't. I just got it a few minutes ago.
Thank you, Mrs. Santos, and thank you for that.
Senator Teller. Ms. Santos, are you saying you have not reviewed what the bill looks like today? Ma'am?
Not the... I'm sorry, not the... I was just texted the amended version.
Okay, what we're going to do is we're going to give you a little bit of time. We're going to do a recess, give you time to read over it. So please read it, and we'll be back. We will now stand in recess.
The Committee of the Whole has returned from recess. I'd ask Michelle Santos for her response to the question if you have read the bill. Thank you.
Yes, Senator, I have read the bill.
Senator Tello, please continue.
Thank you for that. Would you say that you would need a little bit more time to review this to provide a solid testimony as to implementing this legislation?
No, Senator, I think we should just move ahead with it. I think we're just beating it up. As long as we can play a part in the rules and regs, the Department is okay with it.
So you mean in the -- okay. That being said, Ms. Santos, have you had the -- well, the bill still requires payment for stamps before cigarettes are sold. So has anyone done an impact study on the cost of the wholesalers and the increase it will cost to the customers? An impact study?
I don't believe I've ever seen an impact study, Senator.
Okay, so there's been no movement into talking to the wholesalers? Because they're requiring funding before the cigarettes are sold, so they would have to come up front. So would you look into -- would you consider doing something like that?
If I was to do an impact study, that would require money, and it's not budgeted. We're operating bare bones. I don't think the Department could afford to do an impact study at this time.
Okay, I'll save the -- oh, there is a section that -- there's an amendment that I'm proffering, Ms. Santos. It's an amendment that will basically change "shou" to "mae," so it doesn't force Department of Revenue and Taxation to find a third party to run this program. But it allows you the opportunity to either seek a third party or within Department of Revenue and Taxation to find a way to do it within yourself. Would you be amenable to that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Senator Mooney, do you have any questions you want to pose to Ms. Santos?
I have no questions for Ms. Santos, but I guess I'll just reserve my time to speak until we get out of the Committee of the Whole. Thank you.
Thank you. Senator Pirro, do you have anything? Jose Pirro?
I just wanted to ask Ms. Santos regarding the action that is being taken in regards to the initiation of this tobacco tax stamp, because there's going to be a -- we're going to have to have a lot of -- do a lot of work in regards to the different requirements to account for the importation of the tobacco that's coming in on island. And at first, I recommended that in order for us to account for all the tobaccos that are coming in on island, we need to have a consolidated warehouse where a customer quarantined can account for all the tobaccos and the cigarettes that are coming on island. And I just wanted to ask her what are some of the plans to start off with the operation of making sure that tobaccos that are being imported are accounted for? Thank you.
Thank you. Senator Shelton, do you have any questions?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and I appreciate the bill very much and the second opportunity for us to speak with DRT before we move on this piece of legislation. We had a very long and thorough public hearing process for this bill, and I do appreciate the time again, Ms. Santos, that you're here giving us. And I wanted to ask about the current monitoring and collecting of the tobacco taxes. How many compliance officers do we have employed at the Department to handle this section?
My compliance officers, we have about -- we have two going out with the business privilege tax, which is GRT. We have a couple of their officers also that go out with -- they go out in twos when they do bonded warehouses.
So two officers who are dedicated to the bonded warehouses?
Two officers from compliance and two officers from the GRT side, the tax side.
Okay, and this -- do you believe that this is enough capacity within the Department to carry out this tax stamp system?
No, we could probably use a couple more, because when we tap for the tobacco taxes, other work in the branch gets left behind or we fall behind. Do you understand? They're not fully dedicated to just tobacco tax. We had indicated, I think, in previous testimony that we would need a total of six people, so if we added a couple more or even four more, that would be perfect, great, and wouldn't hamper the other operations of the two branches.
I see. Thank you very much. So I guess we can agree that there is certainly a need at the Department for us to be able to fully execute a program like this and to collect the revenue that is due to the government of Guam through the tobacco taxes. And I feel like this is just such an important time right now, this moment in our current economic condition that's too critical for us not to move on this bill and not to empower ourselves to capture every source of revenue for the government of Guam. And I think what's really unique here in this situation is that we, as a legislature, we're not trying to propose a new tax. We're not proposing assessing a greater fee. Simply, we're simply here trying to collect what is due to the government of Guam. And as we've established through the audit from the OPA, what we've established through information from --
Two officers from compliance and two officers from the GRT side, the tax side.
Okay, and this -- do you believe that this is enough capacity within the Department to carry out this tax stamp system?
No, we could probably use a couple more, because when we tap for the tobacco taxes, other work in the branch gets left behind or we fall behind. Do you understand? They're not fully dedicated to just tobacco tax. We had indicated, I think in previous testimony, that we would need a total of six people. So if we added a couple more or even four more, that would be perfect, great, and wouldn't hamper the other operations of the two branches.
I see. Thank you very much. So I guess we can agree that there is certainly a need at the Department for us to be able to fully execute a program like this and to collect the revenue that is due to the government of Guam through the tobacco taxes. And I feel like this is just such an important time right now, this moment in our current economic condition that's too critical for us not to move on this bill and not to empower ourselves to capture every source of revenue for the government of Guam. And I think what's really unique here in this situation is that we, as a legislature, we're not trying to propose a new tax. We're not proposing assessing a greater fee. Simply, we're simply here trying to collect what is due to the government of Guam. And as we've established through the audit from the OPA, what we've established through information from your Department, is that there are certainly millions of dollars that we are losing every year as a government. And in our new situation with the pandemic, with the loss of revenue, I'm thankful for an option like this before us to help us rebound and to help us collect more money. I have one more question, Ms. Santos. If you know or has the Department asked the Attorney General or perhaps GITA in the time since this bill has been proposed about how the lack of enforcement for tobacco tax collections can possibly jeopardize the tobacco settlement payments that we receive as a territory? And I know we benefit from this money. It goes to public health, to cancer services, to research, and also to education, as this body just a few months ago was able to appropriate some of that money to the University of Guam, to the Guam Community College. And so we do depend a lot on that tobacco settlement money. Is there any possibility, if we fail to enforce the collection of tobacco taxes by doing some kind of system such as the tobacco stamp taxes, are we jeopardizing future funding from this settlement?
Senator, right now, all the collections, a portion of it goes to the Healthy Futures Fund. That's what you're referring to, right?
Well, I'm talking about the tobacco settlement payments that we receive that go through GITA from the big tobacco -- the big tobacco companies, the settlement that happened many years ago.
The AG -- I believe the Attorney General has to answer that, because they have -- they run the master settlement agreement. They have that money to enforce the master settlement agreement. It would be the Attorney General that has to answer those questions. We have -- we do work with them, Senator Shelton. We do work with them. We've been working with Fred Nishihara, and he and our compliance officer supervisor, they took a trip to Hawaii to see how Hawaii, you know, the state of Hawaii administers this program. So they're very familiar with the program, but -- and, you know, they have that money to do the training and whatever they need to enforce the programs under that master settlement agreement.
Thank you very much. I posed that question because, of course, I do have some concern that if we're not enforcing these tax collections here on Guam, that we might jeopardize something in the future. But the chair is giving me the signal, so I will save my questions for the next round. Thank you very much, Ms. Santos.
Okay.
Thank you, Senator Shelton. Senator Perez, do you have any questions to the panel?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, and good afternoon to Deputy Director Michelle Santos. So, Michelle, can you give an update of what the status is for the rules and regs with Department of Revenue and Taxation?
Well, Senator, we've started to work on them. I can say we're 50% done. We're looking forward to working with Mr. Nishihara, Fred Nishihara, on the enforcement part and, you know, the fines and penalties part with respect to the law. And then also, we've been also working on the RFP to send out the request for proposal for the cigarette stamp tax. We've been working on that already. I think that will be done in a couple of days. We had worked on an earlier RFP, so we have the template in place, and we're just working on the scope of services now.
Okay, so is it your intention to go through the AAA process for the rules and regs?
Yes.
Okay, and is there a timeline as far as a public hearing for those draft rules and regs?
I believe we're shooting for the last week in December or early, the first week in January.
So there is progress on DRT's side, and if you can describe the question that had to be answered prior to implementation regarding the cigarette stamp tax?
The question? I'm sorry, Senator. I'm not understanding.
Basically, there was guidance that was sought from the AG's office regarding the implementation of the cigarette tax?
Yeah, we just wanted to make sure that it wasn't a double taxation to the wholesalers, and he clarified that by saying that it was not. So we got that cleared away.
Okay, can you explain what date was that provided, the guidance? When was that provided?
That was provided August 7 of this year, 2020.
And so that would probably be the delay. One of the reasons for the delay was that, to ensure that it wasn't a double taxation? Okay, and so in the public hearing, you raised certain concerns, and that also you took the position, or at least in the testimony that was provided, that DRT can do it in-house. Do you still -- are you still in that -- still hold that position that DRT should continue in-house with the implementation of the cigarette stamp tax? Or are you in support of Bill 368, which will basically have a third party enforce it?
We -- we're in support of Bill 368 as long as we can control, you know, the rules and regs and work out, you know, work out where Revenue Tax can oversee this and control it. It's really, you know, unusual for a third party to enforce and collect and even draft rules and regs. So that's why I'm saying if we're able to, you know, have some flexibility and control it, then I'm for it. You know, we could use all the help we can get. And if there's a, you know, if we're able to hire a few more people to help out with this, I would be happy with that, too.
Okay, so part of the bill actually has -- so basically, that kind of conflicts with the AAA process, doesn't it? Because this is a legislative motion versus going through the AAA process. So can you resolve those two differences? I mean, if you're in support of this bill, yet, I mean, is this everything you want in the bill? I mean, as far as -- because we're going to be voting on this on Thursday. So, I mean, considering that you are 50% done with the rules and regs, and the Attorney General's office still needs to input some enforcement measures into the draft rules and regs, how can you resolve those two? I mean, you're in support of this bill, yet you're moving with the AAA process?
This bill doesn't really give us the rules and regs. I mean, we'd still have to go through the AAA process anyway, is how I look at it. Senator, I'm not too sure. I'm not a lawyer, and we don't have access to a lawyer. Our access to the AG is very limited, because everybody's got a lot to do. So, you know, I'm not sure how to answer that question.
Yeah, so what this bill would do would create rules and regs. And so if you are creating something different and through, under the guidance of the AG's office, there could be a conflict between the two.
Okay, I understand that. And if that's what's happening, then I guess we just redirect, depending on what happens.
Okay, so this bill also allows -- well, basically, it will require an RFP that would include, but is not limited to whichever vendor has awarded this contract, would be allowed to draft additional rules and regulations. Do you see this as a conflict of the Organic Act?
I'm not sure, Senator Perez. I'm not sure. I'm not sure what the Organic Act says, and I'm not sure if this is a conflict. I'm not sure. Like I said, I'm not a lawyer, and my access to a lawyer is limited.
Yeah, so there was testimony provided by Artalagan stating that, you know, it's -- he basically interpreted it as being in violation of the Organic Act. And also to the fact that, you know, private company or private employees, employees of a private company are not held to the same standards of transparency.
Yes.
So those elements have not been changed in this bill? So are you still in support of this? This particular part of the bill?
Not maybe that particular part of the bill, but I don't know. I don't know how to answer that, Senator. I just don't.
Okay. The other thing at issue was the cost. So 12%. So if the Healthy Futures Funds, I think I believe it was tracking, I forget what the last number was, but it's underperforming now. So that 12%?
Thirty, forty million, yeah.
Okay, so that 12% is roughly about, I don't know, it's five million or so?
Yes.
Okay, so what is the estimate for in-house? If it were to be done in-house, what would be the cost of implementing the cigarette stamp tax?
The number that my staff came up with was around 400-some-thousand.
Okay. Yeah, so that was -- what are the concerns?
That's the time.
Time? Okay.
That's right. Save it for the second round.
Yes.
Thank you. Senator Clinton, do you have any questions? None. Senator Lee, do you have any questions?
This is Massey, Mr. Chair, Hafeday colleagues, and thank you, Ms. Santos, for joining us. I also want to thank a previous speaker, the Senator from Assin, for asking some of the questions about the MSA. And so in terms of Public Law 26-007, which adopted a local model statute under the National Master Settlement Agreement, or the MSA, this really helped Guam to be able to receive millions every year from tobacco companies. And in 2001, our local government pledged these funds for a $40-million bond in order to establish various trust and endowment funds that continue to benefit GMH, UOG, GCC, and various health programs. Our government, in that bond-borrowing law, committed to perform certain material obligations found in MSA, and that, and this is verbatim from page 14, line 21 of the Public Law 2604, quote, "A failure by the government to continue performing these obligations shall constitute a material breach, excusing the performance of the other parties to the master settlement agreement," end quote. Deputy Director Santos, are you aware if the diligent enforcement of our local tobacco tax laws is one of those material obligations that Guam must perform under the MSA?
Senator, to be honest, I don't know.
I ask because I'm concerned that with an audit detailing material weaknesses, the lack of regular inspections, and millions of dollars in actual and potential lost revenue, that if we don't improve our collections of this tax soon, we could be jeopardizing our ability to pay the tobacco settlement revenue bond and our continued deposit of MSA payments after this bond concludes. So maybe if you can answer this question, Ms. Santos, wouldn't the failure to diligently enforce our material obligations result in Guam losing a significant portion of our share of MSA payments?
Following your logic, my answer would be yes.
Thank you. And you referenced your limited resources in an answer to a previous question. Are you able to remind this body and the public who might be viewing from home, if you know offhand, how much DRT's budget was cut this fiscal year?
I believe, if my memory serves me right, Senator, I believe it's, we were cut 455,000. I'm not sure, but I believe that's the number.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Santos. So given your reduced budget, is it safe to say that DRT cannot afford the upfront investment to implement the tobacco tax stamp law?
Yes. However, the AG's office has agreed to give us some money, to the tune of $60,000 to start this, start the implementation of the stamp tax program.
I see. So $60,000 to $70,000, but we're still working with that over $400,000 cut in your budget, correct?
Yes, yes.
I'll just, I'll save my additional questions for the second round, Mr. Chair. Ms. Santos, thank you so much.
Thank you. Senator Torres, do you have any questions, ma'am?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Ms. Santos, Mickey, for being here today. The bill, as I understand it, is a great step towards helping DRT to finally enforce equitable collection of the cigarette tax on Guam. And as I understand it, and correct me if I'm wrong, a lot of the problems has to do not only with the release of cigarettes from the bonded warehouses, but the actual tracking of those cigarette products, because there are different levels of, there are different types of cigarette products in terms of whether they're required or whether they're designated for off-island shipment, or whether they're designated to tax-free sales, like to the military or to duty-free, or if they're retail. And would you agree, then, Mickey, that having a tax stamp program on Guam, which is right now existing in 48 states and other territories, a necessary part of that regulation of the -- of not only cigarette products on Guam, but the taxing of it?
Yes, yes.
Okay, because I know that the other part is the follow-through, you know, can we guarantee that sales, cigarettes that are invoiced as for military cells actually makes it to military cells and isn't just turned around and sold locally? But the other part of this, too, that I want to ask you is, in the public hearing, there was discussion about creating this industry of sorts, this whole stamp tax collection industry that would be privately managed in partnership with the government. But this then opens up an opportunity, don't you agree, with creating more jobs on Guam, a new revenue source for jobs on Guam, and perhaps the opportunity for a bonded warehouse facility, as was a centralized bonded facility, as was discussed at the public hearing? Would you agree that those are also other benefits to having this program the way that it's anticipated in this bill? to having this program the way that it's anticipated in this bill?
Yes, I agree. It would create jobs, yes.
Yes, and so I think that when we're looking at the fees, and I know that the proffer of this bill explained that she'll have an amendment to that. You know, I just wanted to comment that while we're looking at the pros and cons of privatizing a stamp program, a tobacco tax stamp program, in addition to regulating and making sure that everybody that is owed taxes is monitored and accounted for, that we also have the opportunity to create additional monies and job opportunities from Guam. So any costs, any fees that are paid are offset by the creation of greater economies on Guam. So I just want to get your concurrence on that, because we know that many of the, as a result, the master settlement agreement was discussed before. But many of the discussions had to do with the need to, you know, enforce tax collections, to be compliant with that. So I thought that that was a very healthy discussion as well by other colleagues. But this is Massey.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Torres. Senator Terri, Terri, Therese Terri.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you, Deputy Director Santos. I'm glad you're here. You know, when we heard this bill, Revenue and Taxation came in with a very well-prepared testimony. They were against the bill, and they had listed their concerns with the bill. And when I review this amended bill, I do not see that Revenue and Taxation's concerns are addressed. And I think some of them are brought up by previous speakers. But today, and you know, so I'd like to go down that whole list and just show which ones have not been addressed. And so I am also very confused at the change in Revenue and Taxation, and that now they're in total support of the bill when their concerns had not yet been addressed. Today, you state two other concerns, or two concerns that you also stated before, which, number one is, if you, as long as you can control the rules and regulations, or that, you know, Department of Revenue and Taxation can control the rules and regulations. Because you are working with the AG on the rules and regulations, you've been working with them for months, and you are just about ready to launch those rules and regulations to implement the stamp tax program. However, this bill would, I think, do the absolute opposite. First of all, it, the entire Section 2 is to establish rules and regulations for the cigarette tax stamps. These are your rules and regulations after this. In fact, I tried to look very carefully to see if there is any authority in here for Revenue and Taxation to amend them. There really isn't. But, you know, that might be arguable, that you could always amend rules and regulations. However, it does say in here, these regulations are passed into law by the legislature. So I don't know, I would have to run that by legal. So this law, this bill would be establishing your rules and regulations, despite all the work that you've done with the Attorney General to come up with rules and regulations. Another part, Section 1 of the bill mandates that the Department of Revenue and Taxation will prepare an RFP. Not an IFB, but an RFP. And I want to ask you about that also. But in part, so Section 1A, subsection A, says, "The drafting of any additional rules and regulations deemed necessary for the enforcement of the cigarette tax law, subject to approval via the administrative adjudication law." It says, "The RFP shall include, but not necessarily be limited to." That means the person who you are awarding a contract to under that RFP is the one who's going to be writing the rules and regulations. That was one of Department of Revenue and Taxation's strenuous objections at the original hearing, I thought. Is that you didn't think that was proper? That that rules and regulations for the government of Guam were going to be drafted by some third-party contractor? Or that private enforcement of excise taxes was going to be done by a third-party contractor? Or that we would procure a company to enforce tobacco excise stamp tax? Administer the cigarette tax law? All of those things, Revenue and Taxation had said, they had been offered $60,000 by the Attorney General's Office to purchase the equipment necessary. And they told us at the hearing, $60,000 would be enough to purchase the equipment that's necessary for these stamps. And that when the rules and regulations were done. So they were putting their attention and their priority on this, since it's been brought up, you know, over the last few months. And I don't know, I hear from you today that you are, you have been working on this, you're ready to implement it? And that, from previous testimony on the bill at the public hearing, that would save us, according to the way the bill's written right now, $4 million paid to that third-party contractor. Of course, it may create jobs, because we're paying $4 million of our tobacco taxes towards this third-party company, as opposed to the $300,000 that Revenue and Taxation might need. And so I just think it's a little bit, you know, I think we even had discussions with the Appropriations Chair at the time. You know, if AG's offering 60, if we could somehow, you know, maybe through Transfer Authority, cover the 300 investment into Revenue and Taxation, we could save the $4 million. Thank you, Mr. Chair, wait for the next round.
Thank you. Senator Kelly, do you have any questions?
Just one or two simple questions. So in looking at this third party, one of the things that came across my mind was wanting the possibility of building this up for public management, and having some sort of understanding as to if we introduce a third party into this, is there any understanding about the length of time that would make sense and provide that ability for DRT to further build itself up? So is there any understanding of that on DRT's side? Let's say if the contract was limited to two years, is that something that makes any sort of sense that a contractor would be able to shore up certain parts of the program, carry out some of the initial work, but also allow DRT to continue building up towards public management of this program?
That's a possibility, Senator. Most contracts that we've issued are two to three years. And that's a possibility that RevTax could build up and eventually take it over. That's what I'm assuming you're saying, right? And the answer is yes.
So in the way that the specs are written here, and I know that you're working on scope of work, well, I guess that's for other parts of the program. But in looking at the specs that are here, do you think it makes sense that a company might be interested in this kind of work and the shoring up of a program for a two-year period? Does something like that sound like it would be an RFP that would generate interest? Because if it goes forward at all, I'd prefer to see that it has a real limitation on time so that we can reassess and reevaluate where we're at and what the next step forward is if this direction has gone into. So I was asking if two years sounded like a reasonable timeframe?
Mrs. Santos?
Yes, yes, I'm sorry, yes.
Those are my only questions for right now.
You're done? Thank you. Madam Speaker, any questions?
Mr. Chair, I just want to note to the panel, to the panelists there, Ms. Michelle, that given that you have now read this bill, and given that it has taken years for DRT to implement this, and given that RevTax does not have the resources to hire manpower, as I understand, after raising your concerns with the Governor's Office and the time addressing your concern in my amendment, does this address your concern, Madam Deputy? Because, does this address your concern?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, looking at the auditor's report, and after hearing the inquiries from some of my colleagues, I want to note that even on the last term, when this, when a similar bill was proffered and passed into law, that there was a request of a private vendor to be paid up to 44%. And with this amended version, that is looking at up to 12%. I want you to note, Mr. Chair, that when bills get introduced, and there's concerns, and there's opposition and all that, based on markup hearings, and based on communication, and based on trying to find amicable solution, because there are those that oppose and those that support, you try and come up with a reasonable solution. And in this effort is no different, Mr. Chair. I'm really trying hard to say that, based on what the OPA was saying, and based on what DRT hasn't done for years, we're trying to find and collect on resources that has been escaping. And I think that in this effort, and working with the administration, and working with RevTax, and I have to say that they have been communicated with. There have been, from our office, from your office, communication to DRT and to the administration. So, Mr. Chair, this bill's intent was to literally look at seeing the shortfalls of our government as it relates to the oversight on the tobacco tax law, and to know that we need to close that gap. We need to collect those revenues. And if those revenues need to be put into a template, so the structure or the infrastructure is there so that they can move forward, and that nobody, if one does it, everybody has to do it, then we need to put that in place. That's why we're here. So. I'm just going to hold it this time and reserve the rest of my time for my closing, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Senator Castro, do you have any question? We're on the second round. Okay. Senator Jim? None. Senator Tello, do you have any questions? Because I know you do have amendments, there's only two amendments on this bill.
Mr. Chair, can I just have one second too? Because I'm looking at the clock here, and we said at 2:00 we would end. And I just wanted to, can I have one minute recess, please?
We'll take a quick recess. Committee of the House is back in order. Senator Tello, you have any questions, ma'am, to the panel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for that short recess. I'd like to also thank Mrs. Santos for being here, Deputy Director, and providing your testimony. You know, I too read the testimony that you had last time, and it was quite different. So what is it, Mrs. Santos, the bill that you had testified that you opposed, what is so different from this one compared to the other bill?
Please unmute, unmute. Michelle, I cannot hear you anything.
Can you hear me now? I'm sorry.
We're good now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I haven't really had a chance to compare the two bills. I just briefly looked over the bill that was just sent to me. So I do know that, my understanding is that, you know, we're able to do more than what I originally thought we could not do. So that was my change in my testimony. That was my change in my thought. If RevTax can, you know, still keep a handle on it, I'm okay with it. We're okay with it.
Thank you, Mrs. Santos. But, you know, it's important, I think, Mr. Chair, too, you know. And I believe you're hesitant. I've been listening to you speak and being hesitant, not being able to really grasp this new legislation that, or revised legislation, to really get a grip on it and provide a really solid testimony on it, and actually to go through it. So it is quite important piece of legislation. And I just feel that, Mr. Chair, we should reconsider this bill, and let's do it right. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Senator Mooney, do you have any questions? None. Senator Pito?
This is Massey, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to echo the speakers mentioning regarding, you know, the issues when we started this, you know, this plan to initiate this bill. And the main problem that we faced during the initiation of this bill is the manpower that they need, not only RevTax, but custom. That's the most important part. Once we get those people in line to do the work, then it's going to be easy for us to implement this program. But right now, we need to really support RevTax in recruiting more people and custom and quarantine, and also touch base with commercial port on just how we're going to set up the containers over there. And is commercial port going to charge us? Because it's going to involve, you know, several thousands of dollars to really implement this program. And I just wanted to make sure that when we started to do this bill, we ended up with the, we started out with the expense. And the expense is going to be mostly on the manpower. And that's all that I wanted to raise. And I know, and I want to thank the Deputy Director of RevTax, because I'm pretty sure that this type of program is new to her. And I know that we need to work closely with RevTax and with custom and quarantine. And thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. And, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Senator Amanda, do you have anything?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I'd like to reiterate my support for the measure, that this is really a critical time that I think we, we, we need to pick up our feet and get moving to create any revenue that's possible for the government of Guam. And the potential here to, to help the Department of Revenue and Taxation collect millions of dollars, I think, is, is really a simple question before us that we're able to, to do for the people of Guam so that we can ensure that our government services keep running, we can ensure that we are providing what we need to provide through our government to the people of Guam. Sidosmasi.
Thank you. Senator Perez, do you have anything?
Yes, thank, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, so there's one issue before the, so one, one thing that was brought to light with the AG's guidance was that the cigarette stamp tax is not a double taxation. And in that, in that law, it provided for a 0.4% discount on, on the cigarettes. So, being that, having said that, if this bill were to become law, there is a potential effect to the Healthy Futures Fund, you know, unbeknownst to, you know, if we're gonna implement that 0.4% discount, that would equate to a large loss in the Healthy Futures Fund. So, counter to what some of the colleague, my colleagues believe, that it would bring in more revenue, it might have a negative effect to the Healthy Futures Fund. So, that needs to be corrected in law. This bill is premature. And I think it's very, it's, it's also important to note that there are two paths, right? Two paths to closing this gap in, in revenues. One is through the privatization, the other is public, reforming public or through DRT. And, and has been stated in public testimony that the difference of 300,000, if you were to do it in-house versus 4 million, 4 million to a private vendor for who knows how long, right? We're talking about, you know, the milking of government money indefinitely. And is this, is this the policy we want to pursue? I mean, we're all, we're always being criticized, we're not being frugal, we're not being wise about how we spend our money. And yet, we're willing to throw, throw out this 4 million when we could be, be doing it for much more, more frugally. And all that money can go towards much-needed services. So, I don't buy this argument...
Mr. Chair, I rise to a point of personal privilege, please.
All right.
A point of personal privilege, please.
Personal privilege? Okay.
I'd like to know that how can we, how can the speaker say that this is premature? And I want, it's not out of order on a point of personal privilege?
Point of order, point of order, Mr. Chair, that's not a personal privilege, it's a debate.
Senators, senators, the last time I checked, they're talking to me. Let me address it, okay? Not any of you. Madam Speaker, can you speak, can you state your, your point of privilege?
Yes. And my take as the author of the bill is how can this be premature? Because I want to note that what has been done to address this issue that has been brought up for years, that has, as I noted in, in the previous summary reports, summary reports, what has been done this term? What has been done? And in the efforts of trying, Mr. Chair, I just want you to know that, that there is solutions.
Point of order, Mr. Chair.
Madam Speaker, you stated it. Senator Perez, please continue.
Yes, so...
Address the bill, please, address the bill.
Point of order, Mr. Chair.
What is your point of order?
My point of order is that personal privilege does not allow you to debate and whether a bill is premature or not, it's nothing to do with personal anything. It is a, it's a debate, it's a very legitimate source to debate regarding a bill.
I ask Senator Perez to please continue.
Yes.
Everybody else, please just calm down. We're just about done with this bill.
Yeah, so basically, it was a point of information that if we were to move forward with implementation of the cigarette stamps, there is still an inconsistency in the law that predates the AG's guidance. And what that is, is that there is a 0.4% discount, which would mean there, there'll be a reduction in the Healthy Futures Fund. So, that's why I'm basing that statement on, that it's premature. That needs to be fixed first so we don't see a decrease in the Healthy Futures Fund. So, yeah, wasn't it, it wasn't, it was basically a point of information. So, again, you know, the point is, is it's, there's two pathways. There is the government way and then there's also the privatization model, which is much more expensive. And, you know, what that would ensure is the almost guaranteed profits of a company at the expense of our agencies that need this money, including DRT. And I think that it's, you know, we should have had the AG's office here to provide more input as well as OFB so they can respond to these questions and how they're, they are working towards creating rules and regulations. And especially the AG that is in charge of the master settlement agreement. I mean, that's the kind of guidance you want to, to develop these rules and regs. And, you know, we've seen time and time and again, when we start drafting these rules and regs without the AG's guidance, it ends up in court. So, I think, you know, following the, the administrative adjudication law, following the AG's guidance is a prudent way to go forward with these rules and regs. And like you've heard today, the Deputy Director has stated that they are on, on target. So, give them the time, give them the time that they need. And in fact, these rules and regs are, are, need to be not only vetted by the AG, they will be, the public will be allowed to speak on it rather than through this process. You know, we've, we've drafted many bills that have unintended consequences. You know, let's go through the AAA process.
Thank you, Senator Perez. Senator Clinton, do you have any question? None. Senator Lee, do you have any questions? Moving along.
Sidosmasi, Mr. Chair, I just want to thank the Deputy Director, Mrs. Santos, for joining us and for providing what I think is very useful testimony to this body. And I want to thank her very much for her time and, and thank you, Mr. Chair. Sidosmasi.
Thank you.
Senator Torres, do you have anything?
No, thank you.
None. Senator Therese, do you have any questions for the panel?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So, Director, at the last hearing, we discussed, oh, first of all, may I just ask you, you know, so if you were not able to review the amended bill, how is it that you came to your support for the bill? As opposed to your opposition to the bill at the last hearing?
I was not able to compare it to the last bill, Senator Terlahi, that's all. I just was not able to compare it to the last bill. I mean, I just got it a few minutes before this Committee of the Whole and, you know, that's not enough time for me, you know, to look it over and compare it to the last, last draft of the bill. And that's all I'm saying.
All right. But so how did you, how did department, the department switch from its opposition to now its full support of the bill? Was it from meetings, as the sponsors indicated, with the sponsor or with the governor? How, how did that happen?
We've, we've had meetings, we've had meetings with the governor and Lieutenant Governor. I'm trying to remember what other meetings we've had. We did not fully connect with the, the AG's office, which is the one person we wanted to talk to. Last week, late last week, he was in training, so we were not able to connect with him.
All right. And you were not able to review the amended bill prior to, to a few minutes before session today?
No, because we got it so late, yeah, we got it late. I didn't get it on time, you know?
All right.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So, the original bill, you know, in Section 1 and the amended bill, both call for issuance of an RFP for a company to enforce tobacco excise stamp tax. You had opposed that in the last hearing. Do you now support an RFP for a company to enforce the tobacco excise stamp tax?
You know, I, I, I don't know how a company's going to enforce the tobacco stamp tax. I, I really don't. I do know that, you know, they're going to write the rules and regs. I don't know how that's gonna play if we go ahead with our own rules and regs. I, I don't know how this is all gonna pan out.
Thank you. Yeah, I don't either. I mean, I'm, you know, we are counting on you. And I was very confident the last time when you testified that you were working with the Attorney General, because I know they've been working very hard on this as well. And we're trying to find a way to save the government that 4 million dollars of outsourcing this and instead invest it into Rev and Tax and save millions of dollars. And, and that was how you testified before. And then, so in another part of this bill and in the, the last version of this bill that you opposed, it says subsection E, "The payment to the company selected to own, operate, maintain, and oversee private enforcement of excise taxes described herein shall be based on the following formula." So, we're not paying them for stamps, we're paying them for enforcement of excise taxes. And you had very much opposed that last time. Do you support that now? Private enforcement of excise taxes?
I don't know where you're reading from, Senator.
Oh, on page 2, on subsection E and part, on section 1 of the bill, so subsection E.
Oh, okay, for the purposes of enforcing. I'm not sure what enforcing means. That could mean a lot of things. If, if it means, you know, purely collection, that, that would be difficult, you know, because, you know, our people are trained, I, I don't know how they're gonna do this, you know, without, I mean, our collection people and our tax people, they're, they're trained, you know, they, they, they go through a lot to do this. And I don't know how a, a private company would be able to do that without also leaning on other government jurisdictions to, to assist, you know, or, I'm not even sure other states go as far as doing this. I know that the other states sell the, the stamps, the equipment and train on how to use it, but I'm not, I'm, I'm not sure other states, I've not been able to research that whether other states do, you know, all of these things, enforcing, writing rules and regs.
Thank you. Yeah, I was there when they passed the stamp tax law where they, they envisioned that we might have to pay a company for the stamps, but never did I see in that law envisioned that we would outsource, you know, enforcement of our tax law. So, what about section 2 of the bill? This is enacting rules and regulations, very specific. And these rules and regulations for the stamp tax law in several sections of, it say, "The department shall, the department shall, the department shall." Do you want these rules and regulations enacted versus the rules and regulations that you've been working for months on with the Attorney General's office?
Well, you know, Senator, what we worked on, we went ahead based on the law, not this amendment, so I, we would have to rethink it after we, you know, depending on whether this passes. But we went, we, we worked on it based on the law.
I appreciate that. That's how rules and regulations should be implemented, very carefully in accordance with the, the laws. And so, on page 6 of this bill, one of the rules is very specific and we talked about this at the public hearing, it's 21A07. This rule provides that the stamps shall be sold in rolls of 15,000 or 30,000 or sheets of 150. And we asked, why would we put such specific parameters as to how the stamps would be sold? You know, is this geared towards one particular vendor or, you know, it, why would we do that? Why would we limit the, the department's ability to procure a stamp tax, a stamp vendor like that? So, you opposed this the last time. Do you support this now? I think you've been...
You know, we didn't, I don't remember discussing this, Senator Terlahi, but my understanding is that there's not too many companies that manufacture and sell cigarette stamp taxes. And, and we get that information, I believe, from Hawaii. And so, this may have been taken from Hawaii's, you know, documents, what they provided for us. I don't know where they would get that other than from that, but Hawaii has a similar, they have a similar specification as to how their stamp taxes are sold. So, it could be from the vendor too, it could have been from the vendor too that provided it, if that's the way they sell it.
Yeah, that's what I'm worried about, is whether we're catering to a specific vendor. I remember at the hearing, it may, I'm sorry, maybe it wasn't you, but it was Mr. Rick Duñez from one of the companies involved in tobacco sales who said he didn't support this either because it seemed to be limiting Reverend Tax's ability to, to, you know, get the cheapest. And then this, these, these rules allow for the department to solicit via an RFP...
Last question.
Stamps. Stamps, if, instead of an IFB. And so, we had discussed this at the last hearing and we weren't, no one was sure why we were using an RFP at that time. Do you support an RFP versus an IFB for purchase of stamps?
Well, the, the RFP would be more direct, right? We want to know if, if there's a company out there interested in, in providing stamps. An invitation would just be, just to get a feel of, of what companies are out there that could provide these services. So...
Oh, no, I should clarify.
I would support an, yeah, maybe I'm not understanding your question, but Senator Terlahi, I just, if I'm gonna put out an, an invitation to bid or an, an RFP or request for proposal, I would go for the request for the proposal so we can, I mean, it, I, I don't want to play around with it, just do it already and, and, you know, figure on, on, on if there, if there are companies out there that provide it.
Thank you.
Provide the services.
Thank you very much, Deputy Director. You know, point of information, Mr. Chair, of RFP is a request for proposals.
That's correct.
And an IFB is an invitation for bid.
That's correct.
Bid meaning lowest amount is going to win, as opposed to request for proposals is what they do for like services or where you have different factors that vary. And so, we, we, it's generally recognized that IFBs are gonna get you the cheap... And so, we, it's generally recognized that IFBs are going to get the cheapest, the most value for a certain product.
Senator Therese, if you have any point and you wanted to make an amendment to the bill, then we'll address it then. Okay? Thank you. Now, we'll move to Senator Kelly, okay? Senator Kelly? Do you have any questions, ma'am? Senator Kelly, do you have any questions?
No, I don't have any questions myself, per se. It has been important to hear the many different points, both for and questioning it. But I do yield my time to the former senator if she has further questions.
All right. Thank you. After you, we're done. Senator Therese.
Thank you very much for yielding your time, Senator. If I could just, yeah, this is really the crux of the matter, you know, whether we are going to pay somebody else to enforce our tax laws. That's one question. Second, you know, whether we are going to pay money that could be invested at revenue and taxation to enforce all of our tax laws to one company to enforce this stamp tax law. You know, and we're talking about getting more value for our buck here, you know, that we haven't been, the prior, you know, the department prior to you, Deputy Director, were not able to enforce. And so, I very much want to commend you that you have made progress. You have found somebody to give you money to purchase the machine necessary. You've got the rules and regs done, ready to launch in January. You've got the AG opinions done, and you've got the, the RFP, I think you said, was ready to launch next week.
Yes.
Yes. So, lots of progress. And that is what we expected from revenue and taxation, once they put their mind to it. And we really, I really want to see you succeed. And so, I guess I'm just, I'm just going to ask you one more time, you know, do you, do you support outsourcing this function of revenue and taxation and paying those millions and dollars as this bill is written? It's going to pay $4 million to an outside vendor versus investing $300,000 or giving revenue and taxation a portion of that? Or even the whole $4 million, you know, if we need to? Because they said all you needed was a few employees that would cost about $300,000 to $400,000 plus the $60,000 machine that the AG is providing. Do you now, you know, so that was what you testified last time. So, do you now support that $4 million to be, to be going towards that outside vendor instead of the $300,000 to revenue tax to finish this stamp tax enforcement?
I know that we can pay up to $4 million. I don't know that it would cost $4 million. You know, I don't know. There's a lot of unknowns, Senator. Of course, you know, being a government agency, we never like our duties and responsibilities taken away from us if we're charged with it. But if we can control it and we can work it, you know, any help we can get is accepted, you know, is appreciated. But as it is, you know, we're tapped. We're tapped out, and I know the, you know, Speaker's upset because we've never, we've not done much about it, but it was also unfunded. We didn't, no money was given to us from the very start since the passage of the law, so.
Yes, and I understand that. And so, that's why, yeah, I'm, I am saying, let's not make it worse, where now that we're actually going to be enforcing this, and it's not just the Speaker who has pointed out that we haven't been enforcing it. Many people have pointed that out over the years, and revenue and taxation has always answered how they were going, you know, what steps they were taking to move. And we, in good faith, you know, are relying on those good faith efforts. I think the Congressman also pointed it out because it was his law originally, the stamp tax. But anyways, so with those unknowns that you point out, I agree, there are many unknowns with this bill. But it's very clear that revenue and tax receives no additional employee, no additional dollar from this. They, the government of Guam is going to take the proceeds, any additional revenue that we are able to bring in, and we are going to pay that, a part of that, to a vendor as opposed to helping revenue and taxation with a few hundred thousand dollars to implement all of the enforcement, the regulations that it's mandated to do. And so, I thought that's how you had testified the last time, that we, you know, that was the better investment for the long term. I know that Art de Lagan was also here, former Director of Revenue and Taxation, and he also testified that at the public hearing, that he thought it was in the best interest of the government to invest that in revenue and taxation in their enforcement divisions as opposed to paying a third-party vendor. And remember him saying, "I agree with the Deputy Director. My testimony is the same." And so, I am just concerned that, yeah, we are, we are, they're, you know, you are saying you agree with this bill, but it's, it's the same in the issues, it's the same bill in those issues that you opposed at the last hearing. They're going to continue to say you agree with this bill, and you have said there are many unknowns. And so, I, I just feel this is a very concerning process, Mr. Chair. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Therese. Senator, Madam Speaker, do you have any questions to the panel other than that? If you don't, this ends the second round. We will now, I would like to thank Ms. Santos for being here today. The panel is being dismissed at this time. Thank you very much, Michelle. Be safe. Take care.
Thank you. You too. Thank you. Thank you, Senator.
My colleagues, we will now proceed to the amendments, and we will begin as the amendment was received. We will start with Madam Speaker's amendment that reads, it's on your drive.
Page 1, line 16 to 18.
Page 1, line 16 to 18. Ma'am, if you could go ahead and read your amendment and explain your amendment.
To amend the bill to read, "For the purposes of enforcing the cigarette stamp, tax, stamp law, the total cost of the administration of the cigarette stamp taxes program, which shall include payment to the offerer and such costs incurred by DRT for contract management, shall be a percentage not more than 12% of the tobacco tax collected in excess of the average actual monthly excise tax collected over the last three fiscal years, and then delete each month."
Does any of my colleague would like to speak to that amendment? I need to say yes, okay? Don't, don't do this just one time. Senator Louise?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I want to thank the author for this amendment as well, too. That was my concern about the 12% of the Healthy Futures Funds as opposed to what we're already collecting and what they'll be collecting in excess of. And so, I rise in support of this amendment, but I just have one question, though, in regards to the last three, most recent fiscal years. Now, I'm just wondering if we have to wait until the FY 2020 audit is complete in order to get the average of the three years? Or I just wanted to find out if that was, do we have to wait until the FY 2020 audit is complete in order to get that average?
Just word of advice, revenue and tax, when they do taxes, there's no audit. You pay tax, they know what it is, they just give an average. But go ahead, Madam Speaker, if you want to answer that, that will suffice.
I meant the audit of the Healthy Futures Funds. Do they do, do they not do an audit for the Healthy Futures Funds Special Fund?
If I'm correct, if we follow the amendment, it doesn't talk about even that. It just refers to the cost. So, unless you wanted to go further into the HFF.
Okay. Well, the way I'm reading it, it says, "in excess of the average actual monthly excise tax collected over the last three fiscal years." So, just an average of the last three fiscal years, which means 2018, 2019, 2020.
If you can say that.
Just the last three.
It's just the last three years the Speaker mentioned.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Senator Munoz. Senator Perez, I saw your hand go up and then go down. Do you want to ask a question to this amendment?
Yeah, actually, I had the same question, but if they can give us an estimate of what that is. Is there an estimate of that monthly amount?
Do we have an estimate?
Yes.
Oh, I don't know if the Speaker has an estimate.
I don't have it at this moment in time.
Okay. Senator Perez, do you have another question to that?
If that could be followed up.
Do you want me to take a small break?
No, we only got 11 minutes left. We, that's something that, do you have another question, Senator Perez?
Yeah, what if it doesn't, there's no excess?
Then if there's no excess, I think it answers itself.
That mean they don't get paid?
Senator Perez, I'm trying to understand your question. If there's no excess, the amendment is in excess. If there's no excess, then there's no excess. So, I mean, why would you need an answer for that?
So, does that mean they don't get paid?
I don't know. I wouldn't be able to answer that. It's in excess, the average. Okay? I mean, huh?
So, the answer is no?
Senator Perez, I'm just going to read that, "shall be a percentage not more than" "collected in excess." "Not more than." If we follow the sentence and you interpret the sentence.
Answer is yes.
The answer is yes. Yes to what? Madam Speaker, if you can respond to that, please.
We, we know right now that we are collecting less, Mr. Chair. With the implementation of this program, we look to ascertain anywhere over, over the $5 million that's being collected today to $15 million. So, the answer is yes.
All right.
So, the answer is yes, that they may not get paid because if they don't, if there's no excess, then 12% of zero is zero.
If you make zero, you get zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Senator Therese, did you have a question you wanted to pose to this amendment?
Yes, and it's following up on that last question. It's very similar. So, we're telling that we're going to give the contractor now a percentage, 12% of what they make, but we can't have, we have no estimate of what that might be. Sponsor would yield, if there's an estimate.
Mr. Chair, I will answer, and that would be up to...
Hold on, and I'll ask if you want to yield to the question. One more time, Senator Therese.
Yes, if we have any estimates of what that amount might be, because when BBMR did their fiscal note on the original bill, they said there were no estimates as to what they might be able to collect with this mechanism in excess of current collections. They were not able to calculate that. So, I'm wondering if the author has any calculation. So, what are we looking at to be paying this vendor?
Okay. So, maybe the Speaker can answer that, if you yield to the question.
Sir, I can take a minute if I, only because I just won't, don't want to speak out of turn, but if it is in excess of what is being provided here, they will get no more than, no more than 12%. If we make anywhere between over $5 to $15 million and that percentage, which was 44% in the last public law, if this bill is passed or if this amendment is passed, they would get 12% of that number, of that amount earned or collected. So, that's what would the average be? Do I have the actual number right now? I don't.
Thank you. Thank you. Senator Therese, do you have any other questions on this amendment? Thank you.
If I could calculate, yes. So, 12% of 15 million, yeah, I'm not able to do that. I have to use a calculator. And then, and then, you know, so as the previous Speaker pointed out, according to this amendment, if they make, if they don't exceed current revenues, we're saying a contractor is still going to take this contract with the possibility of not making, needing current or exceeding current revenues. And I guess I'm trying to figure out why would a contractor do that and take that risk of not exceeding? And I'm guessing it wouldn't be because of his lack of effort. It might be because of what we're seeing right now, is that we're not bringing in revenue because of the economy.
Mr. Chair, it was a point of information. I just want to know.
But do you have a question, Senator Therese?
Yeah, just asking if, if, you know, a contract, if we're proposing by this amendment that a contractor is seriously going to take zero if they don't exceed current revenue.
It's a good gamble on themselves.
Do we, and there are no other costs that will be paid, I guess?
Is that the question you're asking?
I am just, yeah, I'm trying to figure it out.
Okay. Well, Maria, the Speaker, after you're done with your question, she can probably explain her amendment.
All right.
How it was generated.
So, on that amendment.
I just want to, go ahead.
Yeah, please.
Just want to keep it simple. This was the request of DRT in their efforts to come up with a compromise measure to help this bill along. This was the DRT's request.
It's a request from DRT. They're probably trying to keep as much money for themselves to get things going.
I'm sure they're trying to lessen paying $4 million versus paying something less, which I hope.
Exactly.
Yeah. Is there a contractor on Guam who, or anywhere that we have knowledge of that is interested in doing this type of work for Guam?
You yield to the question.
Mr. Chair, I'll try. I wouldn't know that at this particular time until the RFP is out. Do I know that there may be someone that is qualified for it? Yes, there may be.
Okay.
Do we know, I mean, I've never heard of this kind of thing.
She doesn't know. She stated already, she doesn't know until the RFP is out.
Okay, sorry. I thought she doesn't. Okay, then, then, just to clarify, then, according to this amendment, does that relieve the Department of Revenue and Taxation from any payment to the vendor or the contractor if revenues collected are less than that formula? I mean, are zero, according to your formula? Is there any other cost that we, we're not, that's anywhere else in the bill that will be paid to that vendor instead?
Okay. Would you yield to the question? If not, you don't. No. Doesn't yield to the question.
Oh, oh, all right. Okay, well, on the amendment, then, that's what I would like to say is that, yeah, I'm concerned if we're going to put a formula like that. I agree with reducing the amount from the original bill as to what we were going to pay. And so, that seems to be reducing it potentially, if we're estimating $15 million in revenue, you know, excess, that we might be paying now 1.8 million. And that still exceeds what, I mean, that's less than $4 million, so that's progress.
That's progress.
Still exceeds, yeah, for the amount that, that revenue and taxation would need just to simply implement this law. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Does anyone else like to speak on the amendment? None. Are there any objection to this amendment? There being none? Senator, Senator Smith, do you object to it? Thank you. There being an objection, all in favor of the amendment? Please raise your right hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Motion passes. We will now move to the next amendment introduced by Senator Telo Tidaway. Ma'am, you introduce an amendment on line 4, page 1.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity. And, you know, I have great reservations about this legislation, but this amendment, you know, in case this bill does pass, I want to put some safety measures in there, and that would be to go on page, page 1, line 4. to strike out the word "shall" and place that with "may." That's on the First Amendment. The Second Amendment is on line two, page five, which does the same thing. It strikes out "shall" and put "may." And this gives the opportunity for, you know, Revenue and Tax to decide whether they can do this on their own or not, whether they want to keep whatever proceeds or this so-called lost revenue that they're not getting because they're not doing this to GRT, not only to implement a program, but would also be able to pay for some of the other departments and agencies, the massive amount of Department of Agencies that are in Revenue and Tax currently, which they've been in desperate need, collections, GRTs, you know, all the other, driver's license, Mr. Chair, you, if all people know, probably can name all the agencies within DRT. So this gives Revenue and Tax that opportunity, you know, to decide how they want to go, what route.
All right, thank you. Does any of my colleagues like to speak to this amendment? There being none, are there any objections to, Senator, you object? We have one objection to that amendment. All in favor of the amendment? Please raise your right hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Motion fails. Moving along to the next amendment. We have Senator Kelly Marsh. You have on page, line five, page one. If you can speak of it, please.
Senator Mahassi, Mr. Chair. Yes, so this amendment goes to the questions that I asked the Deputy Director of DRT. And I think it, again, with some of these other amendments, it's striking a balance, right? It's trying to come up with something that will maybe move this along, but put some limitations to it so that it gives us time to reassess, to revisit this as is needed. And as DRT was saying, that two years should be a sufficient amount of time to work with this contractor and to have the program shored up, but then for them also to be building up their public management side of this. So this amendment is on line five, page one. To amend Section 1 of the bill to read, "Within 45 days of the enactment of this act, the Department of Revenue and Taxation shall issue a request for proposal in compliance with the Guam Procurement Law for a Guam, excuse me, for a company to enforce," and this is the addition, "for not more than two years, the tobacco excise stamp tax levied under Article 7 and Chapter 6, Title 11 of the Guam Code Annotated, which shall include the administration of the cigarette stamp tax law established by Public Law 34-55 and codified at Article 7 of Chapter 6 of Title 11 of the Guam Code Annotated." So again, this allows us to move forward in the immediate, but it puts in some limitation. And this also, at the same time, gives the Department of Revenue and Taxation some time to shore themselves up. To, and then it can be revisited as to whether the program is, and the ability of DRT are now able to move forward and continue the contract or move forward with public management.
All right, thank you. Does any of my colleagues would like to speak to this amendment?
I object.
No one? I hear an objection. There an objection to this amendment? We have one. All in favor of this amendment? Please raise your right hand, please. One, two, three, four, five. Motion fails. Moving along. We are now on, Senator, let's see. We are now on Senator SFP, Senator Sabina SFP, that's you, right, Senator Perez? Okay, just want to make sure that... If you can go ahead and read your amendment, please. We need to, we need to wrap this up. We only have amendments and then we rise. So we're almost at the end. I know we're supposed to end at three. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So my amendment basically strikes out A. So again, the issue is whether this bill is in violation of the Organic Act. And so what the Organic Act states is that it's the executive branch that has control over taxation. And to allow a third-party vendor to be in charge of those rules and regs, I think, you know, definitely infringes upon that. So that's the reason for this amendment.
Thank you. Does anyone would like to speak on the amendment?
I object.
You object. Senator Reese, do you have, want to speak to the amendment and then we move?
Thank you. I'm trying to find Revenue and Taxation's testimony on the public hearing because this is one of the provisions that they were extremely clear about, that they did not think it was appropriate for anyone besides them working with the Attorney General of Guam to draft rules as to how we would enforce our cigarette stamp tax law, or any law, or any tax, that that should be done by our tax officials. They were very clear about that. So I support this amendment. And, and it's very disturbing to me that they hadn't even reviewed the new bill. And they come today and say, you know, after we met with certain people, we now agree to this bill, without even having had a chance to read it in advance, to agree to the language. And they clearly said today, when we read this language to them, this particular language is being struck, they could not see how this was going to work with an outside entity drafting rules and regulations for them. And they also said that their rules and regulations, I think they said that those were ready to be rolled out first week of January. So I would say, why would we not give them that opportunity after all the work that they have done together with the Attorney General to get enforcement done by our own tax authority? Thank you, Mr. Chair. I support the amendment.
Thank you. Does anyone else like to speak? Senator Perez?
Ready to close.
Okay, close. Thank you.
Depending if, unless somebody else wants to speak. Yeah, so the other thing I want to point out, in addition to infringing upon the Organic Act, is that there's a conflict of interest. So what this RFP would do, it would allow this company to not only draft rules and regs, but to enforce these rules and regs that have been drafted. So I think that's, yeah, the conflict of interest is already ingrained in this bill. I think it's important to strike this part, to remove that conflict of interest.
I object.
Okay, thank you. There's an objection to this amendment. All in favor of this amendment, please raise your hand, your right hand or left. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Motion fails. We now move to Senator Therese Terly. You have an amendment. You have two amendments, so we will wrap it up with yours. You got line 14 to 21, page four. Ma'am, if you can go ahead and read your amendment, please? Line 14 to...
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, so this section of the bill that I'm trying to amend is in regard, it's titled "Conformity with Statute." And I'm going to add a sentence to the end of this paragraph. The paragraph reads, "These regulations are in conjunction with 11 GCA 26601 through 26609 and all other regulations of tobacco products. These regulations are passed into law by the legislature. Any discrepancy between these regulations and the statutes they interpret should be resolved in favor of the statutes. To the extent these regulations contain discrepancies with other regulations, the discrepancies should be harmonized to give the broadest possible effect to the relevant regulations evidencing a discrepancy." And I am adding to that paragraph the sentence that reads, "The Department," meaning the Department of Revenue and Taxation, "So the Department may amend or adopt additional rules in accordance with the AAA, the Administrative Adjudication Law." And the reason why I'm adding this amendment is because, as we just discussed, they told us, they are, they have worked with the Attorney General on rules and regulations. So it's perplexing to me why we are adopting by this bill, rules and regulations, how they're going to manage the stamps, when that's exactly what they have been working with the Attorney General's office to do, is to develop rules and regulations to manage the stamp and, you know, enforcement of those stamp taxes. So I don't want to undercut their efforts or their ability or what they've come up with. And I'm trying to give them some flexibility here to, you know, if these do not suffice, these rules and regulations that are going to be adopted by this bill, then they could adopt their own. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Does anyone would like to speak on the amendment? Speak on the amendment. If none, Senator Therese, would you close? Do you want to speak, ma'am?
No.
No, no. Madam Speaker, would you like to speak to the amendment?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
All right.
Just in short, I guess, this is not about picking on you, Chair, it's about getting the job done. Four years later and we're still here, while many have pointed out issues with this proposal, they have also pointed out fundamental problems like, like a broken record, but, you know, Mr. Chair, in the efforts of trying to move this and make this work and giving Revenue and Taxation the opportunity that they may adopt additional rules and regs with the AAA process, I guess, to be fair, I'll support the efforts. But I just need you to know that I'm trying to find resources for this government.
Thank you. Senator, no one else to speak, right?
No objection.
Okay, no, no one to speak. Senator Reese, if you can close, please.
Yes, I would like to, Mr. Chair. And finding resources, you know, if you read Revenue and Taxation's testimony and you read their, even their testimony to us during public hearings on their budget, on everything, they've repeatedly told us the stamp tax law was an unfunded mandate. If we've helped them, they will implement it. And the new director is very clear, and I have utmost faith in her, that when she says she's going to get this done, she's assigned the deputy, that they would get it done. And they've outlined their progress today. We can't get any better than that, that the rules and regs are done, all the legal stuff is done, RFP is done, they're ready. But we're scooping it from them, trying to implement our own rules and regulations. And, and it makes me question why? Why would we do that? Why would we develop the rules and regs for the department that has already developed rules and regulations with the Attorney General of Guam? They say, you know, that's one of the, they say in their testimony in September 29, that's one of the issues they have that's being dictated by the original bill and by this bill. They say it in their attachment dated October 31. They made a list of things in the tobacco stamp bill that they had issues with. This was one of them. And, and again, you know, I'm, and I'm talking fast, and it's because I'm getting excited, and it's because I'm trying to understand. You know, we want to empower the agency. Revenue and Taxation is not the agency to disempower. It's not the agency to underfund and then say, very creatively, in fact, that because we've underfunded you, now we're going to contract for $4 million with an outside company to do something that you should be doing and that we refuse to give you a single dime to do. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Are there any objections to this amendment? There being none. You object to your own amendment? Thank you. Amendment passes. We are on the last amendment. There are no other amendments. My colleagues, last amendment. Senator Reese is on line two, page one. Your last amendment. And that's it for this bill. And then we move to, get out of the committee of the whole. Senator Therese?
Sorry. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Okay, so my second amendment is, again, there are two sections to the bill. The second section we just discussed, it establishes the rules and regulations for the cigarette tax stamps. Okay, it mandates what Revenue and Tax is going to do. The first section of the bill says that Revenue and Tax shall issue an RFP for the enforcement of the tobacco excise taxes. My amendment is proposing to delete this entire section of the bill because it's one thing to issue an RFP, as allowed in Section 2 of the bill, for a stamp, for a stamp vendor. But it's a whole other thing to issue an RFP for somebody to take over regulatory functions of the government, let alone our taxation department of the government. And so I'm very opposed to that. We, we can, it's, and it's not just me. Artie Logan came in, he's the prior director. He talked about how many years he had worked at the Department of Revenue and Taxation and then as the director, and how this provision of privatizing enforcement of taxes, he had, I think, four items listed. One of them was, you don't have the protections like you do with government employees, where they can be investigated, sanctioned, and, you know, all those things for violations of ethical laws and, of course, you know, tax laws. And then the other one was, you know, he implored us, why would we give $1 million to another company when Revenue and Taxation, even without this law, is in huge need of employees? Why not give it to them? Give them the $300,000? Give them the percentage instead of this private company and let them do what they're mandated by law to do? And let's not forget, you know, we are going to, it sounds like we're here criticizing the Department of Revenue, that we need this bill because they didn't implement this tax, that they've come to us repeatedly and told us, this is what we need to implement the tax. We need to finish our rules with the AG. We need to finish our RFP with the AG. And we need just a couple employees that we can dedicate to this. So it's so perplexing to me that we would undercut them in this way and allow someone who we don't even know right now to implement our tax laws for us. This bill does not even prohibit that a company that is involved in tobacco sales will be the company who gets hired or contracted to implement and regulate tax laws. Very opposed to that. And so that's why I'm proposing, remove the entire Section 1. The Department, the Department of Revenue and Taxation themselves came in and said they want to do this themselves. They are able to do this themselves. And they gave us a plan. And today they've given us the progress and they are, looks like, almost ready to go. I don't know about you, you know, Mr. Chair, but, you know, we are, we've, of course, you know, the auditor made a finding that, you know, past Department of Revenue and Taxation has not been able to collect enough. We're all frustrated by that. But I'm not going to go pay some other private company to do what the department has said they can do. And we've seen them implement programs from scratch during this pandemic crisis that we are in. I believe they are competent. They just need to be given the resources and the focus to do this. I'm so disturbed that our government, our leaders are going to tell them, no, you can't enforce tobacco taxes. It just, it just makes me wonder which company is going to get this contract? Why are we pushing so hard for them to get this contract? We had a problem, Mr. Chair, of, was it, you know, millions of dollars? Not just from the audit, but from one contractor or one vendor not paying their taxes. And we've, you know, thankfully... And we've, you know, thankfully, that came to our attention. So I'm hoping that they have collected on that by now. But they have reported that they have increased collections. And where they have put their attention, they have been able to show us progress. I'm just wondering what, what other regulatory functions of the government we are going to start outsourcing? I just cannot see that as being the best value for the government of Guam, the best ethics for the government of Guam, or even good policy for the government of Guam, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone would like to speak to this amendment? Senator Perez, and then Senator Telo. Senator Clinton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And, you know, I think, you know, we heard the deputy director say that she's willing to work, and I feel that there's a potential compromise here, right? And I do, actually, I do want to, you know, you know, give some thanks to the author of the bill to bring this to the forefront. I think this is, you know, this is an important issue that needs to be addressed. But I think that the, you know, the right way forward is, you know, working with the agency. And, you know, if there's a way to harmonize the two, harmonize this bill with the efforts of DRT, I think that's the, I think that would be the more sustainable path forward. And so in talking to DRT, they had mentioned that they are almost ready to put out a RFP, and what they had in mind was to, you know, be able to have a vendor who can train them on a machine to print the stamps. And so they're, they're ready to go on that. You know, they're working with the AG's office. So I think that this amendment is harmonized with that effort. You know, I think that, you know, that's why I feel that I support this amendment because it will allow DRT to continue the work that they are doing. And so all the efforts are not for naught, right? From both DRT's side, from the sponsor's side. I think this is a compromise. And I think, yeah, it's important that we prioritize this. I see that the effort and the need to do so, and what I see in this amendment is a compromise. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Perez. Anyone else on the amendment? Senator Tiedegui?
Sidozmas, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity, and I stand in full support of this legislation. I think we're all, you know, as someone mentioned earlier, we're trying to find additional funding, you know, for this government. And this is an opportunity for this government to find funding on a law that was already implemented, where Revenue Tax has mentioned that if they were given the resources, they can do it. Where the resources comes by implementing this law and allowing them the proceeds to be able to fund. I mean, it's, it's like, it's already in place, the stamp tax law is already in place. The funding that's coming from that could easily set up this through Revenue Tax. Once they do this, and if there is this so-called lost revenue that we're trying to capture, like I said earlier, this is funding that can help Revenue Tax and other departments and agencies within the, within Revenue Tax. It only makes sense that the comments that were made by the deputy director and the her ability to actually do, implement this, but also give her the opportunities needed with a little more time to review this. I mean, we already know the rules and regs are coming out in a, in a week or two at the most. So, Mr. Chair, this totally makes sense. I mean, if, if there was any opportunity that Revenue Tax has right now to make additional funding for their agency, it's this. So I stand in full support of the amendment that allows them to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Tiedegui. Anyone else on the amendment? Anyone else on the amendment? Any objections to the amendment? There is an objection to the amendment, so I'll allow Senator Telo to close.
Thank you very much. So again, I want to point out that my amendment is to strike Section 1, which would allow a private company to enforce the tobacco tax. It would allow a private company to administer the cigarette stamp tax law. It would allow a private company to draft the rules and regulations. It would allow a private company to oversee private enforcement of excise taxes. I want to strike that. I want to do what Revenue and Taxation asked us to do when they appeared before us at the public hearing. I want to do what the former Director of Revenue and Taxation has asked us to do. And I want to point out, if you look at Section 2 of the bill where we, where the bill establishes rules and regulations, they still allow for an RFP on page five to be issued, but this is to procure stamps. So they shall either partner with a stamp provider and purchase stamps or issue an RFP in compliance with procurement law for the purpose of a local company to procure stamps to be sold. And that's what they've been working on. So that's what they should do. And then I want to just point out again that the Attorney General of Guam has been working with them to come up with the rules so that they can implement this stamp tax law like Hawaii does. Because I remember Fred Nishihara from the AG's office showing us that, that that's how Hawaii did it, and that's how they wanted to make Guam's function like. And that's why the Attorney General's Office was willing to share $60,000 to purchase stamps, enough for two years, including labor and machines, patterned after Hawaii. Will need vendor training of companies to apply it correctly. And that is all going to be taken care of in Section 2. And so this would allow us to remove the real, I think questionable part of the bill, Section 1, which transfers enforcement duties to the, to outside of the Department of Revenue and Taxation. When we transfer this, we're not getting any closer to that bonded warehouse. It's the opposite. So I ask my colleagues to please support this amendment. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator Telo. All those in favor of the amendment?
My colleagues, the amendments have been completed. Moving along, I ask the author of the bill to please close her, her bill.
Mr. Chair, in the interest of time, I go ahead and, I did have a prepared statement, but in the interest of time, I'd like to go ahead and just thank everybody for their healthy discussion, and we hope to know that, that if we can literally close a gap in collecting $15 million, up to $15 million, that will help the government of Guam in its efforts to providing for the basic services. So if I may, I move to rise from the Committee of the Whole with the recommendation that Bill 368-35L is as amended and further amended on the Committee of the Whole be placed in the third reading file.
On that motion, are there any objection? There's one objection. All in favor to rise from the Committee of the Whole and send the bill to the third reading file? Please raise your right hand. Do we right? Motion passes. We are now in recess.
Good afternoon, colleagues. Timina Trenta, Cinco Nellas, Latour, and Guam is back from recess. At this time, I will recognize OAB Chair Senator Joseph Augustine, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I wish to report back to the body that Bill Number 368-35 LS was discussed in the Committee of the Whole. With good recommendation that Bill Number 368-35 LS, as amended and further amended on the Committee of the Whole, that be placed in the third reading file. That's the motion.
On the motion, without any objection. Motion carries, Senator.
Madam Speaker, I ask that we recess until Thursday at 7:00 p.m.
On that motion, we are recessed till Thursday at 7:00 p.m. Be safe.